Evening, and welcome to the June 21st, 2022 meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. If there was anyone in the audience recording this meeting, please stand and state your name and address for the record at this time. Seeing none, I ask that all electronic devices please be placed in silent mode. And, Counselor Fleming? Can you, are you feeling up to leading us in the salute to the flag?
I can, but didn't I begin the last meeting?
Uh, no, Counselor DiNatale did.
He left and then I was. He left and for the second meeting, I was the lead.
I can do this.
Uh, possibly, okay.
That's fine.
All right, well, we'll go with Counselor Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green, here. Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squaya.
Present.
Counselor Ben Hasinger.
Here.
President Zerella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Kuchar is not going to be here. Counselor Craigin.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor DiNatale.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
That's 10 members present.
Thank you very much. The public had been advised to contact the city clerk's office regarding comments of no more than two minutes. None were brought to our attention. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to participate in public comment, you may approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and address, and which item on the agenda you wish to address, and then you may speak for not more than two minutes.
Jacqueline Wetchy, Pittsburgh resident, speaking on Agenda Item Number Eight. I disagree with several statements made during the previous discussion of 40 U. First, it is disingenuous to claim that because the amount of the fines is the same, there is no additional cost to the public. Anyone who wishes to appeal to the courts will have to pay filing fees, which the city currently covers. Additionally, most people are not lawyers and may not feel comfortable filling out the legal paperwork. They may need to hire an attorney to do this. The rich absentee landlords Counselor DiNatale referred to will have no problem lawyering up. It is the ordinary people who will have an issue, and again, I ask that owner-occupied properties be exempt from this ordinance if you do pass it. Second, this is not just a "change of mechanism" end quote, but will result in more fines being levied as discussed at that prior meeting. Third, it is naive to assume this ordinance will be implemented well. Some of you express concern about the impact on seniors. We had a group of three elderly women who prepared meals to keep Acadian food culture alive in the city. The health department told them they needed to pay over $1,000 in various fees and turn themselves into a corporation, so they moved their business to Lemonster. It's counterproductive to pass one ordinance to reduce abandoned properties, then at the same time pass a second ordinance that gives greater power to the people who drive business out of the city and create the abandoned properties to begin with. This ordinance is a step in the wrong direction. A step in the right direction would have been to embrace French-Canadian foods, but Mayor Mack, New Hampshire already beat us to it and is hosting Poutine Fest. They won and we lost. And lest anyone yell out nonsense, my sources include several articles published in the
Any further comment from the public? Seeing none, we will now hear the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Green.
Yes, hi. Appointments met earlier this evening, and we had two appointments on the agenda. First was a new appointment for a permanent full-time firefighter to the Pittsburgh Fire Department, Jacob G. Morin. That was approved unanimously. Next, a designee to the Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission. That's an annual appointment, and that was for Mary Jo Bolhart, the Director of Economic Development. That was also approved 4 to 0.
Matters before the council.
Move to approve the report of the Appointments Committee.
Second. I have a motion and second. On the motion, Counselor Boishman.
May I ask the chief a question?
Not on the motion, no.
Not on a motion? All right, never mind.
For, for the councilor's information, the individual is from Pittsburgh, as was indicated earlier.
I believe he's from Cleveland.
Possibly.
Even better.
All right, I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council members. This is Jacob J. Morin, and he's been wanting to become a firefighter for a long time, following in the steps of his father. He does have experience. He's firefighter 1 and 2, state mass certified. He has experience with Ashmanham and Ashby Fire, so he brings a lot to the table. He is also, he's already passed all his physical and medical examinations and is a fully licensed Massachusetts CMT, which is a prerequisite to come onto the Pittsburgh Fire Department and saw.
On the, on the Appointments Committee, it says Jacob C. Morin, and on the, the agenda, it says Jacob G. Morin, and you said Jacob J. Morin.
Excuse me, G. Morin. The C. was a misprint.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we will now have the new firefighters sworn in. Madam Clerk, and I ask, as usual, that councilors, they hate the center of the bench.
(inaudible)
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 (applause)
Thank you, councilors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Congratulations and thank you for joining us.
(inaudible)
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 All right. Next up, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. One communication from His Honor, the mayor, an appointments letter for Barbara Slattery as a member of the Pittsburgh Disability Commission, term to expire July 1st, 2025. That will be referred to Appointments. And then, next up, we have the Council as a whole committee. The report of the Council as a whole, yes. You know, at, at the meeting, we, we started with... I, I need to make the report first, Counselor. Sorry. So, the Council as a whole committee met on June 14th and took up really two matters, though they're listed as one petition, 010921, review of the mayor's salary and the city council's salary. The, there were votes to index both salaries to the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, going forward. And then, the committee also voted, I'm sorry, I don't have the margins on here, but the committee voted to adjust the mayoral salary to 120,000, starting after the next election, and councilors to 13,000, starting after the next election. That said, I have Counselor Schultz. Oh, uh... We're gonna have discussion, I need to... Oh, sure, actually, let's, if it's all right with the rest of the council, we'll discuss the councilor's salaries only first, so that we can have Counselor DiNatale's participation before he recuses himself. Was your comment on that subject, Counselor? All right, and, do I have any comment on councilor's salaries? All right.
To approve the report of the councilor's salaries. Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. I, I will be recusing myself from the mayoral position salary adjustment discussion. Thank you. Thank you. We'll wait just a moment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there, I thought he said he could vote on the issue. He checked with Boston, and he said, yeah.
He is, to my understanding, legally permitted to do so. However, he has informed me he is recusing himself to avoid the appearance of bias, which is not required but is laudable.
All right.
Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, at, at the Council as a whole meeting, we discussed the, the salary, the various salary inputs, and we started at the, at the top figure of 160,000 and worked our way down. I was wondering if we could discuss some of the numbers at the bottom and work our way up this time.
So, Counselor, we won't be discussing all the numbers over again, just whether or not to confirm the decision of the committee? And also, our rules and Robert's rules stipulate that when there are multiple numbers to be filled into a single blank, the voting shall begin with the largest number and go down until we reach agreement.
Robert's Rules of Order also says that we can, the person that votes against the particular salary number can also bring that, that, that motion back to, to look at another salary figure as well.
I don't have that in front of me, but our rules as a council say that if there is to be a reconsideration, it has to be noticed prior to the next meeting. So, we have before us the decision of the committee. That is currently the only number that we have before us. If the decision of the committee is voted down, then of course, we would have to return to further deliberation. Counselor Fleming, did I see you had a hand up earlier?
No, no, it's, I lowered it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone further on the mayoral salary?
Move to approve the report of the committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In opposition? No. One, two, three, four. Four in opposition?
Yeah.
It is approved.
What was Counselor Fleming's vote?
Counselor Fleming?
Was approved.
I thought so, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. All right, that is the report of the Council as a whole committee. Next up, we have the report of the, oh, can, yeah. I was about to ask Counselor DiNatale to make a report when he wasn't here yet. Just in time for the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Finance met last, two Wednesdays, Wednesday, June 8th. The dates are a little screwy for this month. Wednesday, June 8th, and took up once again a very long list of orders and transfers. I mean, I can go through each one of them, but it's a very long list.
I would ask unanimous consent from the council to waive reading of the Finance report.
So moved. Second.
It's unanimous consent, so if there is no objection, all right. In that case, the matters before the council.
Move to approve the report of the Finance Committee. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Finance Committee. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Next up, we have two loan orders in final reading, but we also have a request for suspension of the rules on an earmark. I'm going to ask that we take up that item first. If there is no objection, seeing none, can I have a motion for suspension on 19422?
So moved.
I have a motion for suspension, and second, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squaya?
Aye.
Counselor Ben Hasinger?
Yes.
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Craigin?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor DiNatale?
Yes.
And Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is 10 in favor.
Thank you very much. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilors, for taking the opportunity to take this out of order through suspension of the rules. First of all, this is an earmark that was proposed by Senator Cronin, and I'd like to publicly thank the senator for his due diligence in getting the Pittsburgh Police Department this earmark of $75,000. As the council is aware, the Pittsburgh Police Department has moved forward through grant opportunities to hire a full-time clinical support person to be embedded in the police department. Upon learning that, Senator Cronin reached out to me and asked if there was anything he could do to support this position and our efforts to combat mental health, mental health illness, overdose response, and, and I explained to him, with this clinical support person will come a lot of expenditures that we need to facilitate in order to get this position up and running, whether it was equipment, training, anything of that stuff behind the scenes. And through the senator's due diligence in Boston, he was able to get this earmark for $75,000 passed that would specifically go towards all of our efforts towards this clinical support position. The reason I bring it to you tonight is that this earmark got tied up in Boston, and it was only released two weeks ago, and that gives me a short time between now and the end of the year to purchase the stuff that we would like to purchase through this, this earmark. So, I'm grateful that the council was able to take this under suspension of the rules this evening, and, and hopefully, with a positive vote, we, we can continue to move forward with our clinical support position. I'd be happy to answer any questions as it relates to this earmark, but once again, for the public, a big thank you to Senator Cronin for his continued support to the Pittsburgh Police Department.
Thank you. Counselor DiNatale? Does, does this entail a hire?
No, no, sir. This is gonna supplement the position that we hired under that five-year grant.
Yes.
To bring in a clinical support person in the police department. These $75,000, specifically equipment, a, a new office in the PD, stuff of that nature.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Counselor Squaya?
Thank you. Have we hired the new crisis response clinician?
I am interviewing tomorrow morning at 11:00. I look forward to this first interview, and we're excited about the candidate that's coming into our interview for this position. If all goes well tomorrow, I would expect a two-week notice, and within the month, I'll have that person embedded in the PD, providing service to those that need it the most.
Fantastic, and it's nice to hear that we have a five-year grant for this position, so that we can ensure that we have some longevity.
Yes.
The $75,000 for equipment and training, would you expect this to last for one year or potentially...
I, it has to be spent by July 1st.
Spent by July 1st?
Yes. Some of the stuff we're purchasing, we, we have a mobile office that we're, we're creating at the PD through wall dividers and stuff of that nature to provide privacy for the clinician, all-new office equipment, a desk, computer systems. The biggest expenditure is gonna be a vehicle for our clinician. We don't want our clinicians going out there in marked police vehicles. Part of the purpose behind working with clinician is to come a little bit more anonymously. You know, they will be working with plainclothes police officers, so part, the, the big part of this grant will be to purchase a, a very plain vehicle that they can go out and do their outreach in that aspect, so that's gonna be the lion's share of this.
Thank you. Almost done.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming?
Yes, questions have been asked and answered by both councilors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Yeah, my question is, in this unmarked vehicle, is there going to be a mobile medical cart or a mobile medical bag for the clinician to use in field?
The vehicle will be equipped, almost identical to that of a police vehicle. There will be a police radio, a police radio installed in it. There will be blue lights installed in it, but inconspicuously. And yes, there will be a medical bag as well, equipped with Narcan, life-saving drug, somewhere out in the field. For the most part, the clinician will be working side by side with a police officer, and this vehicle will not only support this full-time clinician, but it will also support our domestic violence advocate, as our domestic violence advocate goes out twice a week and does home visits. So, this is a clinical support vehicle that's gonna be used by several different members of the police department in a clinical support services, whether it's domestic violence or, or substance use disorder or mental health response.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Boishman?
Is this gonna be a daytime op, operation or a nighttime?
The, you talking about the new clinical support position?
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be very flexible, Counselor. We, we go where the need is, and if the need is at 7:00 at night, it'll be at 7:00 at night, or if the need is 8:00 in the morning. Primarily, it's gonna be listed as daytime hours, but with such flexibility that we can respond when the need is most present.
All right.
Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, just to piggyback on the, the answer that was just given regarding the clinician's hours, is this gonna be a very demanding job? It sounds like it is going to need more than just one clinician to handle the whole city.
That's a great question, and in a couple of weeks, I'm just about 95% done with my annual report, and the councilors are gonna see very shorthandedly what we did last year and the last previous year as far as calls for mental health services. To give you a short preview, my department responded to over 500 calls for mental health services through our crisis intervention team. This is a step in the right direction, Counselor. We may find that more is needed. I know it's a, not much bigger scale, but the city of Worcester has four in place, but, you know, by sheer size, I mean, that's why they're there. I'm just excited that we're making a step in the right direction. This will be the first time fully embedded clinician in North Worcester County, so it's definitely the step in the right direction.
No, no, I agree. I just don't wanna burn anybody out, you know, before the, the position has a chance to really, you know, evolve.
Nor do I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, on that subject, you mentioned approximately 500 calls. As word gets out that you're really committed to this model and attempting to improve mental health outreach, do you expect that number to go up in the short run?
That was 500 calls that my crisis, we have a crisis intervention team embedded in the police department. We're already working with clinical support, but on a part-time basis, so I guess this goes back to Counsel Fleming's question, are we gonna burn this person out? Currently, we have part-time, through our relationship with Community Health Link from Lemonster, we already employ part-time clinicians. Those 500 that I'm explaining to you right now, those are actual 500 visits that clinical support went out last year and actually did a Narcan talk to someone that was in crisis to provide services. So, not only are we gonna have a full-time clinician, we're gonna continue our relationship with CHL. In fact, CHL is our new provider for this full-time position as well, because this position is, is being brought on to us by CHL, where they're paying all the supplementary fees as related to a full-time position. So, in essence, we're gonna have one and a half or 1, 1.3 clinicians working in the city. So, that 500 I related to, those were actually Narcan talks by clinical support last year. And I'll be happy to answer more questions in a couple of weeks when, when you, when the councilors get my end-of-year report.
Sure, sure. No, that's, that's good. It sounds like this, everything is moving in the right direction, and I applaud it. Counselor Green?
Chief, will this clinician be able to work hand-in-hand with our team, our two-member team that's already in place through the board of health?
Two-member team is specifically geared towards homelessness. Now, keep in mind, everything is interrelated. We're talking homelessness issues, mental health issues, substance use disorder. It needs to be a collaborative approach. So the short answer is yes. I look forward to bringing our health department's team in to work with our clinician. You know, for too long, everybody's been working their individual silos. In this case, I would expect our clinician to work hand-in-hand with our city team, but more importantly, to look for other resources, such as Alyssa's place in Gardner and the work they're doing outreach. Just today, I was at a press conference with the district attorney about a grant that he just acquired to bring additional recovery coaches to the community. So I would expect our clinician's going to be working hand-in-hand with Alyssa's place in Gamma, providing recovery coach services to the residents suffering from substance use disorder in our community. So there's a ton of moving parts. The positive thing is, we're being very proactive, very progressive, very forward-thinking when it comes to approaching, you know, some of the things that are impacting the people living in this city.
Right. I applaud you, and I have for the years that you've served as our chief, to even recognize and have open, truthful conversations about what is happening in our community. I think that's important for all of us to realize that we can't go along with blinders on and not realize that there are people in our community who need help.
It's happening everywhere, and that's all we can do, is just continue looking for tools that we can add to that toolkit we all talk about.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
I have a few motions and a few seconds to accept. If there is no objection, we will take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Take a motion to send 15222 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Counselor, I do need to read it first on the agenda.
Okay.
But yes, 15222 is a loan order for 3,300,000 to pay the cost of demolishing the existing and constructing a new Oak Hill water storage tank and complete miscellaneous repairs and work at the Overlook Scott and Fallula water storage tanks. It is in final reading.
Motion to send to its final reading.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes. I have a motion and second to pass this through its final reading to be enrolled, ordained, and advert -- well, no, to be appropriated as listed. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squawyer?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
President Zerilla?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Cragan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor De Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Ten.
Is unanimous. Next up, we have 15322, also a loan order for 30 million to pay the cost of various sewer separation projects, including but not limited to the sewer separation project CSO 010, 032, 045, and 083, as outlined in the enclosed order. This is also in final reading.
Motion to send to its final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass it through its final reading and appropriate as listed. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squawyer?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
President Zerilla?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Cragan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor De Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Ten unanimous.
Thank you very much. All right, and then we have five, no, I'm sorry, four orders that will be referred to finance. If there is no objection, I will not read them out at this time. Next, we have 19022, an ordinance that a vacant property and registration be -- that a vacant property and registration ordinance be added to Chapter 137 of the Pittsburgh City Code as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. This is in final reading. I see we have Mr. Skrowski here, but as we have already passed this through a few readings, if -- all right, Counselor Squawyer?
Yes, I have a number of errors and points on this ordinance change. Thank you for sending the track changes document in Word form, so it's easy to go through. I don't know if, should I go through them now?
I would say any that are not typographical or clerical in nature, because those can be amended without formal vote.
All right. My first concern with the registration and maintenance of vacant and abandoned foreclosed properties was the same concern I brought up at the Economic Development Committee or whatever committee that we discussed this in, I forget. But it's largely that there's not a lot of teeth when it comes to the definition of what a vacant building is. When it comes to the major problem buildings that we have within the city, if we have a very large commercial property and any one area of that building, it has a lawful business or residence, then the entire building is not defined as vacant. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct, and we talked with the team at Barrett Consulting that's been working with us on this and has looked at other vacant property registry systems throughout the Commonwealth, and they seem to suggest that that might be a separate problem that we're trying to solve for, and this might not be the most effective mechanism to do that through, both because of the administrative burden, but also just the complexity of ultimately, you know, is it 20% of the building, 25, 30%? You know, what is that threshold? And they had a difficult time looking at other, I guess, examples of precedent throughout the Commonwealth and advised against it, and we took their advice.
Okay, because if I had a vacant building at all, I would suggest to anyone that they just occupy a certain area of the building, and it would therefore not qualify for the vacant registry ordinance. So that's a concern to me. But let's see. So on page two, it notes for the definition of maintain or maintained, it notes that maintain or maintained means maintained in accordance with Massachusetts State Sanitary Code, State Building Code, city ordinance and regulations, and fire codes. I don't know if that should be and/or.
Geez, sorry about that.
And then it notes that under this section, a dwelling not secured which allows the entry of unauthorized persons, whereas a dwelling refers to a residence, and I believe what we want in this H is to refer not only to a residence dwelling, but to
Structure.
A commercial property. The word dwelling is a, feels like a very large loophole.
You could add structure, I would say.
Yeah, dwelling or structure.
If it's all right, Counselor, as it occurs to me that we should probably take these one at a time and maybe vote amendments rather than trying to hold them all in our heads, that's my fault. I should have said that at the beginning.
On H, page two.
So the suggestion is that we change dwelling to structure?
Or a dwelling or structure.
I can't think of a dwelling that wouldn't be a structure, but yeah, either way is fine. If that's your motion, then.
In the ordinance, we define dwelling, and we define structure, so I don't know.
All right. So Counselor, well, we don't have a motion to amend yet, and Counselor Squawyer has the floor, but would you like to make a motion for that?
Well, Tom, what would you say?
I think either are acceptable. I think it would be important to draw the distinction that it's not just dwelling.
A dwelling or, move that we amend to say a dwelling or structure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Counselor Green?
Yes, I'm just wondering if there's going to be a fair number of these. I would like to have that before me, and I'm wondering if it would just make more sense to push back the final reading until we get a copy and can see exactly the changes that Counselor Squawyer is bringing up and have Tom be able to make those in, you know, in an agenda form before we vote on or before we're taking one line item at a time.
Counselor?
Could we send this through a committee so that it's not taking up the time of a full council and through either council of the whole or an economic development committee?
I would suggest, Counselor, that a council as a whole would take, you know, would require us to take all the same time, so probably isn't the best way to do it. I would suggest that it be sent to legislative, because it is primarily legislative changes. However, if your concern is your ability to present your changes, it would be your changes, so you would be able to present them to the committee.
Okay, so I'm not on the Legislative Affairs Committee, so.
Right, that's why I said that.
Yeah.
You would be able to present and defend your proposed changes.
I would be able to discuss through the meeting.
Mm-hmm, not once there's a motion on the table, but prior to that point, you would be treated as the proponent of the matter before the committee.
Well, then, I would move that we send 19022 through the Legislative Affairs Committee for further amendments.
Second.
Is there any objection to the withdrawal of the prior motion to amend? Seeing none, all right, so I have a motion and second, Counselor Schultz.
I thought I'd get a chance to ask a question before we amended. Is that possible?
Well, we haven't amended anything yet. This, if this is sent to Legislative Affairs, I would not consider it out of order to ask a brief question of Mr. Skrowski while we've got him here on this subject, if he's willing.
I'm here.
So, but first, is there any objection to this being sent to Legislative Affairs for further consideration? Seeing none, it will be held and sent to Legislative Affairs for further consideration. Counselor, can you send me, and the clerk, a copy of your track changes version?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. And Counselor Schultz, you had a question?
I did have a question. Tom, Counselor Cragan was so nice to share with us this information, I don't know if you saw it, about the Director of Inspection Services from the city of Revere.
So Counselor, you're actually one step ahead. That was on the 40U ordinance, which we'll be taking up next.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Two steps ahead.
Well, two steps ahead, yes. There will be time to discuss that, however.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have 19122, also in final reading, an ordinance amending Section 181.2112, Business Districts, inserting the following paragraph underneath the paragraph entitled Downtown Business as entitled, as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. This is the ordinance that is creating the new district rules for the Main Street Corridor. Any questions, anything you need to add?
Yes, I have to add a few things. So it's kind of the omnibus of, I think there's 10 different amendments we are fitting within here, of which the in-town district was one of them. And I did send along a track changes version, just so the council could see all the changes that were proposed. Pretty straightforward, but I wanted to point three things out in particular. So 181.23, the section entitled MAP. When the final map hopefully is approved by council tonight, that section will need to be adjusted with a new date, relatively minor adjustment, but it says today the zoning map adopted, I believe it's April 21st, 2021, and now it'll need to say adopted, provided the vote is favorable this evening, June 22nd, 2022. That's one change. The second was brought to me by Counselor Van Hazenga, and I'm glad I sent you all the track changes version, this is the reason why. The intent of the use table, 181313 change that was made, was to show that the new in-town business district, IB in that table, would have a Y for rows 1, 2, 3, and 4A, and, or 1, 2, 3, and 4, rather, the first four rows, dwelling, single-family, dwelling, two-family, dwelling, three-family, multifamily development, four to six units. It's actually flip-flopped. It says that DB is Y when those four should be flip-flopped. Otherwise, those two columns are identical across the board. So thanks for pointing that oversight out. That's certainly not the intent. And then one item that has remained throughout its readings, but I wanted to flag, related to a conversation with Attorney Tree of the ZBA and Ms. Paula Karen, the Chair of the Planning Board, who were concerned with first-floor residential uses on, within the in-town district, and the potential for this ordinance to allow for a single-family house, for example, to be developed by right on Main Street. It is, you know, probably unlikely, especially the latter of the two changes, but what I tried to do is sort of a middle-ground approach with added language in 181.79, which is our special residential provisions, and it states residential uses in the in-town business district. And residential uses of six units or less are permitted by right in the in-town business district, provided that 181.791, the dwelling units do not occupy the ground floor of a structure with frontage on Main Street. Residential uses in the in-town business district with units occupying a ground-floor structure with frontage on Main Street requires a special permit from the planning board. And then 792, residential dwellings of three units or less are housed within a mixed-use, not standalone, structure. So that was my attempt to insert some language to resolve that discussion at our public hearing, so I don't think I noted that at the last reading, so I just wanted to bring, put that out there and see if anyone had any questions or comments about it.
Counselor Van Hazenga?
Yes, I remember that it was an area of concern about to fine-tune the language there and add some controls in regards to the residential uses on the first floor. I think this is a good compromise, because it doesn't prohibit it, but it does add just a little bit more supervision and approval to make sure it's in the best interest of the city. So thank you for working that out.
Counselor Green?
I just want to make sure to clarify on that index, I think you refer to it as an index, that a yes was going to be for rows 1 through 4.
Correct.
Okay.
Four for the IB, but not the DB.
4A.
4A.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
And then for the downtown business district, it would say PB for those four.
Mm-hmm. So in the table, the DB and IB columns would just be flip-flopped in those four rows.
Downtown, in-town. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Squawyer?
Thank you. I appreciate Counselor Van Hazenga's statement. I completely agree with it. I appreciate the balance there that we're making with not prohibiting it, but allowing it, but having an avenue for allowing of residents in certain situations. I have a question, procedural question. Should we amend this to include the changes as Tom Skrowski suggested?
I would certainly suggest that we do so. However, I would suggest that we take it as two separate votes rather than one or three. I would first ask for a motion to make the second two amendments, the fixing of the table and the addition of the new language to the in-town business restrictions.
So moved.
Mr. President, I've got a quick question before we take the vote here.
All right.
Withdraw.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure I understand what Tom said about the first floor, the ground level, about him, do they have to go in front of the zoning board, the planning board?
Planning. Planning. If they want to do something on the ground floor with frontage on Main Street, then they have to go to the planning board.
What about Elm Street side? Does that be affected, Elm Street side?
If the structure does not have frontage on Main Street, by my interpretation, it would not be affected. But ultimately, the building commissioner is a zoning determination officer, but that's my read.
All right. Trying to figure that out. Okay. Okay.
Would you care to renew your motion?
Motion renewed. Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to make those two amendments. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is amended. The reason I asked for a separate vote on the date correction amendment is because it is going to be contingent on our vote on 19322. So, I would like to ask the council to take up a motion to lay 19122 on the table and to take up 19322 out of order.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? I believe this requires a two-thirds, but it can't hurt if I'm wrong.
Okay, absolutely. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
President Zerilla?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
10 unanimous.
Thank you. We now have 19322, which updates the zoning map and is before the council. Any comments you need to make?
Sure. So, 19322 updates the smart growth map. 19122 updates the underlying map.
Oh, my mistake.
But nonetheless, your concern still applies because technically, all of this will be submitted as the zoning map to the city clerk. So, this one was where we added Low Park to the smart growth district because that's the driveway that New View has to drive through, and their lawyers want to make sure it's a fully entitled project. And then, 49 Snow Street is also added as a smart growth project, as there's a permitted and proposed smart growth development there that would allow the city to take advantage of density bonus payments from the state for that project.
Move to send 19322 through its final reading. Second.
I have a motion and second to pass 19322 through its final reading to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
President Zerilla?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
There are two.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Craig?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
10 unanimous.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to take up 19122 from the table.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to take up 19122 from the table. This does not require any special vote, so if there is no objection, all right, then 19122 is again before the council, and I would like to entertain a motion for amendment of the effective map date.
So moved.
First, I went to Mr. Skrowski's earlier comments.
Second.
I have a motion and second for that amendment. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is amended, and the amended ordinance is now before the council.
Move to approve the amended ordinance 19122 and send through its final reading.
Second. I have a motion and second to send the 19122 as amended through its, I'm sorry, I can, it was your motion? Would you be willing to withdraw it for a brief comment for?
Withdrawn.
Thank you.
I just want to confirm that the map's included in that ordinance.
Yes, it is. It is listed as zoning map 19122.
Great, just wanted to confirm. Sorry about that.
Renew the motion.
Renew the second.
Thank you. All right, so I now have a renewed motion and second to pass 19122 through its final reading to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
President Zerilla?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
10 unanimous.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 19222, an ordinance amending chapter 139 of the Pittsburgh City Code, non-criminal disposition of violations and municipal fine procedures as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. Mr. Skrowski, any, anything to add?
Not a whole lot. So, I was requested with this one, along with the vacant property ordinance, to submit a track changes version. With this 40U, we're essentially adopting state statute, so the only real discretion, I guess, we have in 40U is, you know, we're choosing whether to adopt it or not, but then we can choose which fines fall within that umbrella. And these are all fines dealing with housing, sanitary, and snow and ice removal issues. So, we added all of the fines in consultation with Board of Health, or the Department of Health, with the building department, that we felt lived under that umbrella, and really, those are the things, I think, where the council has to choose to adopt it, that you could use your discretion to add and subtract as you see fit.
Any questions? Counselor Squallia.
So, just to clarify for Counselors, this is the 40U?
Yes.
That's it.
I have a question on the 40U. I was reading some of this over, and about snow and ice. You get $100 fine. My problem with that fine there is that, and I told you this, it's the first time I met you, that the city takes their tractor and they go down Main Street and they plow the sidewalks, but you tell me an 80-year-old man up in Clarendon Street, you're going to fine him $100?
Counselor, this is only a discussion of how we enforce fines that we issue, not of who should be fined or for what.
But they throw in your face, Counselor, Mr. Chair, that if you don't shovel your sidewalk, it's a violation of the statute.
I understand. That is a, that is an objection to what we are fining and to who, not to how we enforce a fine that has already been issued. This is only a discussion of what we do with a fine that is already issued. If there is a, an ordinance change you would like to propose to the council regarding what fines we have or who gets fined for what, that would be in order on a future agenda.
On a future.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I had a question, Tom, about the municipal hearing officer and how that all works. I was looking at this sheet that Counselor Cregan provided, and it indicated that they had in-house attorneys that were working closely with the municipal hearing officer, and I think Ms. Wedgey made the comment that, earlier during public comment, that, you know, you know, some of the corporations or these large landlords could, you know, it wouldn't be a big deal for them to hire an attorney, but for, you know, a small-time person with, you know, maybe a two-tenement building, you know, it would be costly for them to hire an attorney. I was just wondering if, is there any, is, are the in-house attorney, are we hiring in-house attorneys for the city? And then, would somebody be able to help a person with, coming before a municipal hearing officer with their issue?
So, the, I think attorneys who work in-house, and I haven't, in all honesty, had a chance to read the Revere communicate that came in, so I can't speak on it particularly, but what I do know is a lot of communities that have adopted 40U, their legal departments, their city solicitor departments are the ones often helping to support on the city side. I can't speak for the other side. I imagine we, other communities aren't providing legal services to a property owner dealing with an issue such as this, but, you know, we certainly could refer them to your community.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are legal services, free legal services if people qualify, but, you know, I don't know, you know, there'd be a, there'd be a guideline for that, and I don't know if some of these people would qualify for that help, you know?
And certainly, you know, the tenants may not, but ultimately, the property owner is the one who would be, have their case heard in front of the, in front of the municipal hearing officer, but then ultimately, the court as well. And at the end of the day, this is, in some respects, no different than the way it exists currently, except that the municipal hearing officer is just one step before going to court, which is what would normally happen were any appeal to be generated. This is actually more of an informal setting where the municipal hearing officer can make strictly an objective determination, did this situation occur or did it not? And they can make that objective determination, but then, they don't have discretion beyond that to really, I guess, argue a case in a more, you know, involved way that one might in land court. And then, you know, so, in that event, if you are choosing to appeal beyond 40U and that system, going to court, it is no different than the way those fines operate today.
Right, okay. Thank you, Tom.
I would also just note, as a procedural matter, that these kinds of administrative hearings are usually highly informal, more akin to a small claims court, in which you also generally do not have representation, than akin to a formal court proceeding with all the bells and whistles. We already have it for parking tickets, and I actually just went through it myself, and you literally just sit down in a conference room in City Hall with the parking control officer and talk through why the ticket was issued and whether you think it's fair or not. It's, this would not be, you know, we wouldn't have, I expect at least, the municipal hearing officer, you know, sitting up on an elevated bench with the petitioner staring up at them, so, not that I'm claiming that that's what you're saying, Counselor, I just, you know, I don't want people to get the image of, you know, we're basically hiring our own judge or anything. That's not what this is.
As a follow-up, Tom, would there be some kind of mediation that might happen before they, they had to go before the hearing officer for their objective ruling?
I think that mediation would, in all likelihood, be best served in a court environment.
There is a sort of, I mean, I guess you could call it mediation, more like negotiation that happens before the fine is issued, where someone who's received a violation could talk to the fine issuing authority and say, look, here's what I'm planning to do to remedy this, can we not have a fine, and just check back with me later? And in my experience, those, that kind of leeway is often granted. It's not a formal mediation with a mediator, but frankly, the sums involved would not justify the expense of hiring a formal mediator anyway. They're not.
I appreciate that distinction. I was just thinking strictly about, I know, formal appeal in that sense.
No problem at all. Next up, I have Vice President Van Hasenga.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important to note that this adopted ordinance does not create any new fines, does not change the amount of fines that are issued. All it does is lessen the burden on the city to enforce the fines that we already have, or the regulations we already have on the books. And we really need property owners in the city to follow the rules. There are too many properties where people do not follow the rules, and it causes problems not just for that property, but neighboring properties and the city as a whole. We need to have a mechanism where we can successfully enforce the rules that we already have on the books. This is a, an ordinance that has worked in many communities across the state, and it's very successful, and we need to adopt this to do a better job and make sure people are following the rules. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming?
I'm just looking for clarification on unattended donation boxes. Are you speaking to the clothing boxes that people drop clothes and other things they shouldn't be dropping off?
That's, that's correct. So, that is one of the many things that could fall within the 40U umbrella. And so, in this case, yeah, it would be kind of those large donation boxes that often can get overflown. And when that's the case, you know, we can't cite a property owner for not keeping up the box. It's legal to have one, it's illegal to have one that is overflowing with trash and debris, and even if it is a proper donation, they need to take care of it and manage it.
Okay, because I noticed we don't have as many as we used to. So, that's why I was a little, when I think of donation box, I'm always thinking of a cash donation immediately, that's what went to my head. So, I just wanted to just verify and clarify what, what we were talking to. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Cregan?
Thank you. I'm, Tom, I apologize for not getting my interview with Michael Wells, the inspectional officer in Revere sooner. I got it to the, my colleagues on the council, thank you, Madam Clerk. What I wanted to ask is, I hope, communication is everything. Having a warning period that was implemented, as they did in Revere, before fines are issued, municipal hearing officers, you know, on target, they had a really successful methodology in Revere by doing warnings for six months. And we know from the proposed two-way Main Street and Boulder Drive conversion, that we've had a lot of communication, and the communication is working. So, the, I just want to make the point that a warning, especially, again, getting it translated. So, we have, we have this material in English and in Spanish, because I can vouch for the fact that in the Elm Street area, when we were canvassing for the COVID vaccine bus that was scheduled, there were, and Counselor Cruz was with me on some of those, you know, walkthroughs, is very clear that there are landlords who are not making sure the trash gets picked up or put in the barrel, who are not making sure that porches are, you know, safe. And that's just one little corner of Pittsburgh, and I saw that for myself last August. And again, it's up to the landlords to speak to tenants and have an understanding, and if the landlord is too infirm or unable, they can certainly, you know, build in a rent deduction for tenants that are trustworthy to do some of this trash, you know, the barrel goes out, the barrel comes in. So, there's lots of different workarounds, and I just, I hope that we can think about a really good communication system, and that's followed by a warning system, and it is bilingual, so that there is no confusion on anyone's part.
That's a great suggestion.
Thanks.
Counselor, just for clarification, I'm, because I'm curious, I think it's a good idea, when you say a six-month warning, you're talking about before the imposition of new classes of fines or before the imposition of any fines?
Before the imposition of any fines is what they did in Revere pretty successfully, and what Michael Wells said is that many people were really good landlords and good business people, and they understood what was being asked, and they immediately started to comply. And others, I mean, there was one house that it's got $170,000 worth of fines, you know, multiple problems. So, yeah, having a warning system, again, this is your department, you guys get to decide how to do it, but I think a warning, you have been warned, we are not fining you now, we will begin fines on whatever date, just to let people know, so.
And certainly, it's, using discretion in that way is the best tool we have in our toolbox, and we have a code enforcement strategy irrespective of 40U plan with some properties on Main Street. And our first step is to issue warnings and friendly communications and start that dialogue, because I think we know that's the most effective way to get the change that we want to see. So, we don't, we don't want to be caught up in a municipal hearing officer, appeals court, or broader courts, without giving proper notice to the property owners and without engaging in that dialogue. And I think that's something the city's done well in their code enforcement departments.
And I would completely concur. My only concern was just the mention of six months, because I feel like for non-structural violations, six months is very excessive. You know, if it's trash in the yard, we shouldn't be giving them six months to clean it up, or if it's, you know, snow and ice, then in six months, it'll be gone already. But in general, yes, I know that the departments, the various departments covered under this do give advance warnings and attempt to work with citizens before imposing fines, and I do very much support that. But I do think Counselor Cregan raises a good point, that we should probably develop some sort of standard notice and explanation forms in multiple languages, not just for violation notices, but also to inform citizens of what sorts of things they can be fined for proactively, so that they can avoid even getting a violation notice. for proactively, so that they can avoid even getting a violation notice. That said, we have --
One question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Maybe I'm not all out of here, but I don't know. I'm reading this illegal dumping. So I dumped something out, my name's in the bag. You can give me a $500 fine right off the bat, even though if I go back and pick it up.
Could you repeat this scenario?
My question is, it says here, $500 per day for illegal dumping. Now, we, you know, Counselor Squallia and I, probably all of us, when we had our cleanups, found bags of rubbish with names in them, and we were told numerous times that you can't find them. As long as they go back and clean it up, you can't find them.
So there is a period of time after which an enforcement action has been issued where there's a -- there is an opportunity to correct the offense. And so it, I really, in each case, is kind of contingent on the underlying fine that we're talking about here. But at the end of the day, if the intended goal has been, had been achieved, in this case, the trash was cleaned up.
But, you know, personally, I would like to see the fine be stuck there to the first party, they shut the trash there, even though he's going back to clean it up, because if he didn't have his name and a piece of paper, it would have been there.
Right. And again, Counselor, I don't disagree with you, but that doesn't bear on the question of how we enforce fines that are issued. I don't disagree. There should, if it is possible under state law, I would love to see a mechanism for fining repeat offenders without giving them a cure period. I don't know if it's possible under state law, I haven't looked. But that's a discussion for an ordinance change down the road. Right now, we're only looking at the period between the fine having already been issued and the payment, not the stuff that happens between the violation notice and the fine.
All right. All right, then I get another question from -- Tom, if this passes tonight from this city council, are you going to approach the city council for mechanisms so when these inspectors go out, they can give a fine right there on the spot and not come back to the shop to write it up and mail it out, and you get five days there or 10 days? Gets lost in the mail, you get another 10 days?
Counselor, again, that has to do with the issuance of fines, not the enforcement of fines.
How are we going to run this thing? We're just going to pass the thing?
This only has to do with what happens after a fine has been issued. Counselor?
Just to clarify, in what, in Counselor Craigin's correspondence with Revere, it was noted something about the inspector can write a thing on an electronic thing and it picks it up?
Yes.
And then they also mail a notice for the municipal hearing. So I don't think it's necessarily issuing a fine on the spot, but issuing a notice for the municipal hearing for a fine. Right? Is that what Counselor Boescheman is referring to?
And the, it may be. I mean, it's the mechanism of what our inspectors do in terms of notifying people and so on is all prior to what this ordinance addresses, unless you think otherwise.
There's a small distinction. I think it's, as it pertains to municipal hearing officer process, so Section 8 violation notices, every officer or inspector takes notice of a violation of a rule, regulation, order, so forth. Basically, not later than 21 days after the date of such violation, all tags shall be prepared in triplicate or by the use of an automated ticketing device and shall be pre-numbered. So we would either utilize a triplicate form, kind of book format, to create this, to initiate the process with the municipal hearing officer, or it would be automated, the latter of which is what we would prefer and what we would intend to bring in front of the council when a municipal hearing officer would be appointed by the council at a later date.
Thank you. And yes, I saw the image that was indicated to me. That is for the issuance of fines.
That's for what?
The issuance of fines. This pertains only to the enforcement of fines. It is very valuable, the information that Counselor Craigin has gathered on how Revere runs their whole process, start to finish, but that is not actually covered under the ordinance that is currently before us.
All right. I just want to make sure, you know, I'm kind of in favor of this, in favor of this. I just don't want this to become a money-making thing. That's all I don't want. Because all I heard from different communities, when I did my own work, they make some, they made money on the thing, on the 40U.
I would say that the city will make money in direct proportion to the number of our citizens who do not follow our ordinances. Counselor Van Hazinga?
I just have a quick comment on that, that this is absolutely not a money-making proposition. The purpose of it is not to make money. The purpose of it is to get people to follow the rules. And as is mentioned in Ms. Counselor Craigin's interview, which I think is very helpful, is that people are most attentive when it hits them in the wallet, that it gets their attention, it gets them to follow the rules, and that's the mechanism to do so. It's the money that we generate in fines is not the end, it's just the means to get to the end, which is for someone to follow the rules.
And I would also add, it adequately reflects the capacity that city staff have to spend on all of this work, whereas otherwise, when it's put towards, without 40U, absent that, city staff, both inspectors, folks from our solicitor's office, spend countless hours in land court or in court on these same matters, of which often leads to not a positive end for the city. And this really more adequately reflects the time and energy spent. So I won't speak on whether it's a moneymaker, but I do think it adequately meets the demands that this places upon city services.
Yes, because currently, code enforcement is a money-saving proposition for the city and therefore rarely gets done. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to kind of add in on to what Mr. Skrowski said, I think all of us have heard from our constituents, and they're right in this argument, that I'm a tax-paying citizen and I would like to see X, Y, and Z done. I've been on for about five months, and I think I've heard this 10 times already. And it's their right. They pay their taxes, and I'd love to see, rather than their tax money go to enforcement, we charge the people who are responsible for, for not upkeeping their properties, for not shoveling their sidewalks, or cutting their grass, or disposing of their trash properly. That's kind of where I would like the burden to lie, not on our constituents and the residents of Fitchburg, who do follow the rules and are affected by those who don't. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 19222.
Second.
I have a motion and second. With the counselor's permission, I will read this as a motion to send it through its final reading to be enrolled or deemed and advertised. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Hi.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Zerilla?
Yes.
Counselor Boescheman?
Yes.
Counselor Craigin?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Nine, one in favor.
All right. Thank you very much. Last ordinance, 19922, in its first reading, amending Chapter 169-24 entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times. This is relating to Boulder Drive, as outlined in the enclosed order. I have a notice.
Tom, would this refer to Public Safety?
Ah, yes, thank you. I have a request that this be sent to Public Safety and Public Works for final review before being sent through its first reading. Is there any objection, Counselor Green?
I don't have an objection, but I'm wondering, aren't we going to try to get this done as quickly as possible?
Yes. So Chapter 169-3 allows us to implement experimental regulations, which at the last council meeting, we did for the 90-day period, effective Thursday at 6:00 a.m., which gives us until the second council meeting in September to finalize things.
Okay.
So this was the Chief Martino and Commissioner Erickson's recommendation, that we then have some time to see how things are going, make tweaks as needed before it comes back to the council.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right. If there is no, yeah, if there is no objection, this will stand referred to Public Works and Public Safety. Seeing none, it is referred. We have four petitions. 200-22, Tom Skrowski, Executive Director of Community Development and Planning, to accept the proposal of WCHR to purchase 80 Lunenburg Street. This will be sent to City Property. 20122, residents of Bella Vista One condominiums located at 875 John Smith Highway, to request support for our neighborhood improvement petition as outlined in the enclosed document. This is apparently being reviewed by the Parks Commission and will also stand referred to Public Works and Public Safety. Counselor Marissa Fleming, to fix cracking sidewalks due to overgrown tree roots in Stony Brook Village, beginning at the side of 170 Village Crossing and continuing around to 108 Village Crossing. That's referred to Public Works. And 20322, which is identical to 20122, except from residents of Bella Vista Two, which will also stand referred to Public Safety and Public Works and is also apparently being covered by the Parks Commission. A reminder that Two Way, Main, and Boulder does go into effect on Thursday at 6:00 a.m. Please carefully observe striping and signage. There will also be, I believe we've been told, police officers standing by to help in the directing of traffic if anyone is confused. Please drive carefully and enjoy the next step in our new downtown. That concludes our business for the evening.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. There being no objection, we are adjourned.